We pay to individuals, we start talking about focusing also employees. And so we would ask that you not talk about anything that's protected by property laws, student discipline and school personnel. And any willing to buy by there. And Mr. D, if you have a, please come up to the dice. Mr. Harry will be keeping down. And I also want to mention during public comments, the board does not necessarily respond to those comments that you made. You do listen to those and take them out of biasment, and if there's something we need to act on, we do so. All right, yes.
All right, I'm asking for a third time full mechanic. Because we're adding more buses inventory to it, even if we lose some through eighty, eighty-four through eighty-nine. We're still going to be adding six buses to our inventory list, which put forty-six buses behind that fence. If they're behind that fence, I have to be in those buses before they can leave that fence. Everything that I've Googled and read says there is supposed to be one mechanic per fifteen vehicles. That would put us behind, we have two full-time mechanics and one part-time. Now, if you take into consideration the other vehicles, like four cop cars, the three vans, the trucks, the F-250 golf carts, the Gators. You're looking at sixty-eight pieces of equipment that we at the mechanic shop take care of. And we don't necessarily see them every day, but when we see them, we have to drop everything, like the cop cars to get them back on the road. We have nothing to replace the cop cars with. We do have sub bus. But we don't always have a sub bus. For today, we lost three route buses, and there's only two full-time mechanics. So we need a third full-time mechanic. And it's boiling down some money over safety. Do we value the money that much? Or do we value the children's safety, employee's safety, the public's safety? We pulled bus ninety apart, which is a route bus. And the hub sealed one, we found that the hub seal, the hub nut had actually started to fail. I can't put that bus back on route for a couple of days until we fix it, which is parts that I have to order. It comes from the dealership, which will take time. Now I have to send a route bus. So I'm sorry, a sub bus out, replace that route bus. Now, until that bus is fixed, I had to keep a mechanic on it to watch it. Now, this was all discovered during a routine PM, something that the driver never noticed. But if during that PM, when cop cars would have came in, the mechanic would have never caught that. But two time mechanics, there are just not enough staff in there. That's all I have.
All right, thank you for your comments. Appreciate that. Surely we'll take that under advisement in terms of this personnel transportation. Next on now, dinner, can I have a motion to consider the agenda? Should we consider the agenda? Thank you, Mr. Jones. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Harry. Is there any comments on the agenda as it's forming?
We do need the amendment to section eight, one eight. Through the end, the date from May twenty-sixth to March thirty-first.
And that's on the concern agenda on personnel, eight?
Eight, eight-one.
Eight, eight-one.
That's March thirty-third. So no, you think of some of the agenda. If not, a call for motion to consider the agenda? Call for vote, sorry. All in favor of approving the agenda as printed and amended, then any can be saying yea. Yea, any opposes? There be none, motion passed unanimously. The agenda is amended. Could I have a motion to consider approving the board minutes of April thirteenth, twenty-twenty-two? Thank you, Mr. Harry. Have a second. Thank you, Mr. Oden. Any discussions on the amendments? If not a call for a vote, all in favor of approving the board minutes of April thirteenth, twenty-twenty-three, that am indicating they're saying yea. Yea, any opposes? There be none, motion passed unanimously. Brings us down to our superintendent.
Mr. Fraser, we're going to limit the superintendent for today because of the pending weather. So we're going to begin though, uh, letting you know that your reports are in there, the financials, the school safety report, our district data, incident accident report, and we'll have a few things in operations just in a moment. First, I'm going to invite Ms. Laura Kaye, for the student report, which we are sad to say that this is her last report. We're excited for all the things that she's been on, so let her come on.
Thank you, Mrs. Charles for the introduction. Um, it's an art video session. I'm very sweet, I'm grateful to graduate, but I have enjoyed representing the city body. PRC Elementary had a great month. Students in kindergarten, third, fourth, and fifth grade participated in state testing. Kindergarten students worked very hard this year, anxious to show all they were. They exceeded the school goal for growth on the state test. The students who took the third grade reading test also exceeded the school goal for percent passing. We are very proud of our students and teachers, staff, and parents. That's important to them in learning. Our students had a great time participating in the Special Olympics this month and brought back many rubies. Last week, students performed. Students enjoyed a performance from the high school drama students. On Monday, May fifteenth, from eight-thirty AM to twelve AM, and Tuesday, May sixteenth, from three to six AM, we will host kindergarten registration for twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four. All entering kindergarten students will take a screen grab registration. We are excited to meet our new graduates. PRC Elementary students will participate. And field day on Wednesday, May seventeenth, the class of twenty thirty-five invites you to the kindergarten graduation ceremonies on May twenty-second and May twenty-third. Fourth day, first, or fifth grade, will be held on May twenty. It was fast and furious after most students came back from spring break with an abundance of energy. We celebrated our third act rally and spoke to students about preparing for the state test. Students with perfect attendance for the third round of weeks were celebrated with our third act of house event, including coffee, pastries, and games. Both showbar and band programs performed their spring concerts in front of packed houses. Both staff and students attended the national regional leadership conference on the Mississippi Gulf Coast. Student council also attended the state leadership conference in Jackson, Mississippi, where Bailey Bayden won first place overall in the speech on daily leadership. Students completed all state tests over the past two weeks and are looking forward to a great end of school. Both pledge day and awards day are set for May nineteenth at eight AM and eleven thirty AM respectively. We take off April at PRC High School with a senior pep rally. During the rally, we had a surprise reveal. We announced PRC HS Hall of Fame, congratulations. The night English, Kelly, and Vera, Laura, Kate, Open, and Hannah Mitchell. These young ladies are all here to cross our campus in Asia for their activities, athletes, and academic clubs. When it goes on class, it's a great PRC HS Hall of Fame. We had many PRC High School students involved in the Special Olympics this past month. Some of our students participated and others served as buddies. Congratulations to our girls golf team, Grace Lea, finished number one overall at the state golf championship. She also teamed up with Elizabeth Purvis, and they finished third overall from teams across the state. Our softball team was named district champs. Both our softball and baseball teams advanced to the second round playoffs, and we are so proud of them. PRC concert choir hosted their spring concert, and it was a beautiful display of pure talent. PRCHS wrapped up the month of April by hosting prom for the first time since COVID. Special thank you to Miss Kate Woodron for organizing prom this year. PRC Endeavor currently has fifty-five students on the roster, nineteen on level three, sixteen on level two, twenty and twenty on level one. In May, level three students will attend a filter to the World to Museum in New Orleans. PRC Endeavor currently has twenty students that will return to their base school this year. Thank you once again. This is my final board report, and it's been a privilege to be the twenty-twenty-three student body representative and school board representative. I want to thank the board members, administrators, and teachers and staff who helped me step into this role and offer up the year. Um, from Mark Rowan, Jeremy Robes, to Miss Arthur bringing stuff out at the last minute when I needed it. Um, I love this school, it has helped shape me into the person I am, and I'm proud of certain folks. Thank you very much.
We have a gift for Ms. Laura Kaye. Mr. Fraser wanted to share some remarks.
Well, again, congratulations on everything. Certainly, we have enjoyed having you with the board this entire year. It's been an honor to serve with you. You know, ever since that, I've been on the board. We've always had a student body representative. You know, they've always been outstanding students, and certainly kept up their mold, kept up their train. Again, I also want to just thank you for everything you've done. And it also be one of the first to congratulate you in being selected to the PRC. See, your own peers helped select you that because of some of your leadership qualities and things that you do around here. So your athletics, you know, academics. You know, when I, when I think about you, there are certain words that come to mind. One of the first things that I got to jot down was your commitment. You know, I can recall saying when you came to the meeting, you had the uniform. Because you had to go play a game right after it, but you were so committed. You wanted to make sure that you did, you honored your commitment here, and also were there for your team. And so that was your one, I certainly appreciate that. This shows that how committed you are, dedicated you are to what you do. You know, the second thing that I thought about was your determination. I believe you had two ACL tears since your junior year. I believe that you had to sit out your junior because you were basketball player. But I understand that you were determined that you wanted to make sure you got an opportunity to play in your senior year. So even though you had those two ACL tears, maybe you also had surgery as well. Probably have another surgery, but you wanted to work through that, and you prevailed through that inside. Understand that you did get an opportunity to play in your seniors. Again, congratulations to you on that. And then the last thing I thought about was faith and then, you know, every time that I've had an opportunity to speak to you or talk to you, you always show how much you love your family and the dedication to your family. I think you also were involved with the fellowship of Christian athletes, and that you do a lot. So getting this one to recognize those things and those character traits that you will serve well in the future. I don't know what future plans you have, but I know you can be successful. Because just how you have handled yourself and how you committed to the board is marvelous. We thank you for that, and we wish you much success in the future. So again, thank you and congratulations. Okay, we're getting that for you. If you will stand toward the middle, I think that we'll get the picture with him. And I want to get the whole forward too. It's a call. It also comes from the board. We get a picture with him now first, and then we're going to resume. Picture.
Yes, thank you. I even lost. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Come on, Mr. Charles.
Three, two, one.
It's mine.
Yes, he's all smiling.
Yeah, bro.
Thank you.
Just one, you get mom and dad.
Thank you. You have your phone? You want me to take your phone as well? I can also email it. Yeah, got it. Ready, three, two, one.
Okay, thank you. And again, I'm going to be the other board member, one of the same time, so you can't be walking at this time, and you should take that opportunity.
I like to say that every year that we've had a student body representative, I think, how can that be improved upon? And every year. Trees, a lot of our students step something, does it, and you got.
Great job.
Yeah, and I'll say anybody that shows up at the board meeting in a basketball uniform, that's pretty impressive. So I was able to come on happy. Remember the first meeting I had with her and Ms. Kim's office, and we were going over, and I was kind of worried about everything they threw together, and she had everything ready, and I didn't have a word. She showed me exactly the type of student that later we see you as. And every meeting, we are thankful to have students up there that represent our school. Good job. All right, this will be short. We are going to go through operations, a couple of things just to give you an update. Uh, some of this is in the operation before it was sent out by Mr. TJ. The central office renovations, I was there yesterday, and they're going really well. We are near completion. We hope within three to four weeks, that building will be ready. Um, so I was really impressed by the work that our famous people are doing. Um, we've got a talented staff, so we see them, let them know that we've been a great job. Um, making sure that everything is ready for us. We're excited about moving that building. Also, the cheer and dance facility, I've not entered the cheer and dance facility in a while. But CJ sent that out, and they're blessed to come along really well. Um, we should be ready to go sometime in the summer with that building, so. Elementary pictures were really good, so we had an opportunity to look at that before, and he wrote the pictures there. Uh, it's gone along with it, so. A cell phone tower, I didn't have a picture of it, ceasefire, I sent a text to one of the guys and asked him when that tower would be ready. And he said that they were still working on it, so. Tower looks to be, they have to put their equipment at the top in order for it to be functional, for it to be used for the cell phone. So as soon as that's ready, we will let you. All right, the last thing we're going to do is sort of, I'm not going to go through all of our report, but I will mention employees of the month. And I'll give you the rest of the report in June of employees of the month.
Hold on, it's because I did something.
Okay, all right. Uh, the elementary school, Mr. Donovan Brown, Allison Chisholm, uh, but I'm a teacher and spectacular support staff, Little School Natasha Morris, and Michelle Meyer. Uh, at the high school, the normal teacher, Toby Spears, and our spectacular support staff, Betty and Cody. And then the school district level transportation support staff, Jen Mitchell, our athletics activities coach, Coach Devola, Tony Devola. Group service support staff is Myra Smith at the elementary. Administrator of the month is Stephanie Morse. District support staff, Mary Frost, and our maintenance staff, Marvin Dewitt. So congratulations to these employees. Our report is complete until next month, I think, the rest of that report, possibly. Whether there are any questions from operations or from the school or the district.
Thank you, Mr. Charles. We'll go down to our agenda. They have a motion to consider approving the following financial items. And if there were some choices, I would like to tell them from item A through Q. Item A through Q is considered approving the accelerated Mississippi motion, career coach grant by seven to six, eight to two. And Mr. Harry, thank you, Mr. Harry. Thank you, Mr. Jones. Any discussion of those financial items, items A through Q? If not, a call for a vote. All in favor of approving the financial items, items A through Q, then indicate they're saying yea. Yea, any opposes? There be none, motion passed unanimously. I'd like to take some of these other items individually. The next item is item R in the agenda. They have a motion to consider approving the agreement with AGSM and a consulting engineers for the career cafeteria age back project. Have a motion. Make that motion. Thank you, Mr. Jones. You have a second? Second, thank you, Mr. Oden. Discussion. I had a question about this particular item. I know there's some information, but I didn't, nobody on your agenda. I'm trying to understand this particular cost, and I believe it was listed as twenty-eight thousand, one hundred and sixty-five thousand. Trying to understand what that cost is for, and is it rolled into this total cost that's listed from your agenda, Mr. Charles, you know?
Wanted to get Mr. TJ to answer that.
I said the agreements for the, of the design, that the, this project, uh, the extra three fifty, I believe, is their estimate of the cost of the project. So their design fees are eight thousand dollars. They're just like an architect, so they'll oversee the project, they'll bid it out, sign it, all of this. Um, and then, uh, the project itself, they're estimating around three thousand.
Okay, so there, design fee, and then they also will do the actual construction.
Yes, they, they'll bid it, so.
And so the total gathered is three hundred and seventy-eight thousand and one sixty-five, so. So, so item R will be rolled into this amount now.
Does it have to go that way? Or can you bid it out without that? You can't bid it out without that.
No. It was the size of that.
Any other questions on that particular? I'm going to. If not, I call for a vote. All in favor of approving the agreement with AGSM and a consulting engineers for the career cafeteria H-back project, then any can be saying yea. Yea, any opposes? There be none, motion passed unanimously. Could I have a motion to consider approving pay application number nine to Mitchco Construction Company?
The motion to consider approving pay application number nine to Mitchco Construction.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Give me a second, second. Thank you, Mr. Harry. Any discussion of item T? Pay application number six. Okay, sorry, yes. Yes. Not. Call for vote. All in favor of approving pay application number nine to Mitchco Construction, then the entity saying yea. Yea, any opposes? If not, motion passed unanimously. But I have a motion to consider approving pay change on the number six to the cheer and dance facility. Motion. Thank you, Mr. Oden. Give me a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Any discussion will change on the number six to the cheer and dance facility.
Good question about that one. Yes, was that not putting up the power connections, that not part of the original requirement that was spit out? Or is that something that is new?
It's, it was not in the area.
You say it's not in the area? Any other questions or discussion on that? Not a call for vote. All in favor of approving change on the number six to the cheer and dance facility, then indicate they're saying yea. Yea, yea, any opposes? There be none, motion passed unanimously. Could I have a motion to consider approving the agreement with Landry and Lewis for the middle school building de-roofing project? Have a motion.
Motion to consider approving the agreement with Landry and Lewis Middle School Building De-Roofing Project.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Is there a second? Second. Thank you, Mr. Harry. Question on that. So on that particular item, now as I look through the attachment, I didn't really see the numbers on that particular document. I was trying to understand where the values came from.
So the architect, they're not, they're not, they're not a, just a, I don't know, of the roof. And said that, yes, we need to re-roof it. It's given back in places. It's just old, it's over twenty years old, so it's just time to let that roof be given place. Um, but they can't give us a solid estimate until they actually get it there. Get into the, go back some of the rooms, see what they, what, uh, underneath the existing roof looks like. See what that work needs to be done, and force re-roofing. Uh, and so they just, they can't give us a solid estimate. So that is the agreement that you have in your agenda. Um, are, it's for them to do that work, that, that design work. They could look at it, and then they could, they could give us a solid estimate.
Where's the amount?
It's. It's, it's just six percent of the total.
And then where does that, where does that figure?
Uh that's just in our tech. What these things.
So what happens if? Just double up?
Then the board would have the options to not. Do the project or go a different way with it.
And then we would owe. Landry and Lewis what?
Uh it would be based off of whatever those bids come in, so if it comes in at eight hundred thousand, yes.
So we'll know before they actually start any physical work, what their numbers is.
Yeah, the board would have to uh approve the bids uh before any words.
So the numbers that we're looking at on our agenda package, that just. It's about figures on the. Plus, in a further item being asked to. Consider amending the fund to include that number four hundred fifty thousand dollars in that.
It's just a year mark. It's, we just needed a year mark for it.
We'll say we spent several weeks in Holland in. I was concerned, I was thinking if we come back in the three hundred range, but. We're doing our prices where they are, this is. Everything is coming back through the expenses, so I'm hoping that's a little hard. Not going to talk into the ownership intent to start rebuilding the building. If we don't, we continue to build, continue to have leaks. You know, we could, we could be. More substantial in terms of structure. So it's one of those things that. I, I talked to TJ about this, is this something crucial that you gotta do? You're talking to the principal owners of the building. Thinking something that's gonna have to be done in a good place, a bigger issue.
I just don't know how you tie yourself to six percent of, I figured you don't know. Cause your time's out. We're bound to the. Understand the process has that, but there's gotta be. Solid figures.
Why is the, why is there? Why is it Landry and Lewis only for that aspect without? Having others have. They know the need was.
And six percent is not, but that's.
I don't have a percent. It's the amount of percentage.
So like, yeah, so the estimate. It becomes a higher than what it is, just because the estimate is high, it's even coming a million dollars, it's still be obligated for six percent of the million dollars, that's what the estimate is?
No, it. Not because the estimate, if it come, if the bids come back at a big.
So if it came in at a million dollars, we decide not to do, we still obligated for that six percent of the rate?
Because they, all the time, it's hard, it's years.
Mr. Shaw, you say the roof needs to take.
And that's with the leaks that occur. I've seen that another buildings, or we had a building. Uh I've seen it where somebody didn't. The building got to where it was out using. To tell you the replacement building.
And so it's actually, it's actually eighty percent six. Because twenty percent is destruction. And the patent is awarded twenty percent of their six. They did, the design, the bid base is eight percent of that six, six percent.
So how? Then do you determine that, say six percent is the standard industry, how? Once you get that figured out, you can determine, be fair and reasonable. Hey, so. Once you get the, the estimate you're wrong.
It would actually be bids that you're basing that six percent, I mean, you're gonna be. Bid advertised, and you know, three minutes back, whatever.
So potentially somebody else comes in, bid, they're just doing their picture.
Yeah, they're just, they're.
So they also get six percent of the five, six, seven, eight changes. Nobody's fault there, I'm not, just saying, it's just typical, what it's like a corruption project is.
Any other discussion on that? Not our call for a vote. All in favor of approving the agreement with Landry and Lewis for the middle school building D, de-roofing project. Then we indicate by saying yay. Yay, yay, any opposes? None. One. Motion pass three to. Could I have a motion to consider approving pay application number six to John C Lee Enterprises Limited? Have a motion. Motion. Thank you, Mr. Oden. We have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Harry. Any discussion, pay application number six to John C Lee Enterprises Limited. If not, call for a vote. All in favor of approving pay application number six to John C Lee Enterprises Limited. Then indicated by saying yay. Yay, any opposes? There be none, motion passed unanimously. Could I have a motion to consider amending fund thirty twenty-seven for the following projects? That was seventy-three thousand for the baseball softball field. Fifty-seven hundred for the cheer and dance facility. Three hundred and seventy-eight thousand for the HVAC. And four fifty for the B hallway roof replacement. You have a motion.
I'll make a motion. Consider amending fund thirty twenty-seven, is this for the one, two, three, or four?
Thank you, Mr. Jones, we have a second. If not. Motion fails. Now, one of the things that's happening with some of these. Items we approved already. So we're gonna have to do something about that.
So can we uh consider W again? You can make an amendment. How do that now? I make a motion, we consider amending fund thirty twenty-seven for the, for one through three, and removing item four.
If you wanna just make a motion on one, two, three.
Okay. I make a motion, we consider amending of on thirty twenty-seven, one through three.
Thank you, Mr. Harry, made a motion to amend. Item W to include items one, two, and three, and leave item four as a standalone. You have a second. Second, thank you, Mr. Oden. Any discussion? Call for a vote. All in favor of amending item W. It includes item one, two, and three, then indicate by saying yay. Yay, any opposes? There be none, motion passed unanimously, the amended motion passed unanimously. You know, this leaves item four as a standalone item. And. We have approved item R previously. Now, item U was the, you know, Landry and Lewis for the middle school de-roofing project, we had already approved that. But item four was actually tied to it. Now we need to address it.
We, we, we're gonna discuss it, I make a motion, we consider amending fund thirty twenty-seven. For items four, four hundred fifty thousand dollars for the hallway roof replacement.
What's your motion because they've already made?
Motion is for item four. To amend it on.
The, the motion that we just voted on was to amend item thirty twenty-seven to be number four as a standalone item?
And I'm doing the standalone.
Okay.
By itself.
Okay. So you wanna vote on?
That's what my motion suggested.
Have a second.
Just item four. To me?
No, to vote on it.
Well, we've got double men, the initial part of the amending the fund.
Yeah.
That's what's getting the easy.
Second. Thank you, Mr. Oden. So now it's been amended to actually vote on this particular item, item four. Again, that was tied back into item U, we already previously. Any other discussion on that?
Yeah, I would like TJ to explain about the earmarking part of it, break that down parts. It's not spending the funds at this point.
Yeah, so. The board wishes um. Improve the, the agreement. So whenever, whenever that invoice comes in. You know, when we bid it, the architect starts to invoice us, we can take it month by month, and amend as we go. Uh for that, uh that fund. Um and then the board, due to the project, it comes in four hundred thousand dollars, you know, you amend it at that time. So. I guess if the, if. If the board's not comfortable with four hundred fifty thousand dollars at this time. I would say amend it for fifty thousand, and that way when the. The architect invoice does come in, I can pay it, I don't have to come back to the board and ask for. Money to take that invoice. And then when, when we did it, and the bids come back in, we can, we can consider amending for that.
What would you owe the architect to tell you how to bid? What would you owe the architect before you got it? We would owe.
We would owe him, we'll see.
We're gonna do, so how do we estimate one hundred fifty thousand dollars? That's some, you have general knowledge of for previous projects?
It, it's just him looking at the roof. Cause when I'm there on one afternoon, and say, and I say, hey, what do you think? Any thoughts?
So, so I understand that again, so when we looked at fund thirty twenty-seven. You know, these were some earmarks for the baseball softball, the cheer and dance facility. For the HVAC and also for the roof, that's money that hadn't been spent. But we're saying we're gonna hold that money to, just in case we need to spend those particular projects. So approving item U. Then obligated us for this four hundred fifty thousand dollars, correct? And so we don't even have to have an earmark at this point in time. Because when the engineer comes back with that estimate, we'll see what the estimate is. And we don't have to really have anything earmarked out, to be honest.
It's just, it's just known for the. You have to earmark at least uh six percent of what we think the product. So that's why I say one hundred fifty thousand dollars. You just have to know. And keep it in your head that, that. You know, we have another four hundred fifty thousand dollars sitting in that fund. That we can't spend because we're, we're considering doing this roof project. So you have something else later on in, in the agenda that um. That uh that one's gonna come up and present to you for the football field, that you're not voting on tonight, but it's another project. So we have to consider, we have to keep this, this project in mind before we move forward with other projects. Cause you know, it's almost like I'm forgetting about it. And, and the, the board, if you do, if you do amend the budget for four hundred fifty thousand dollars, and we don't do the project, you can always. Come back and say, alright, we're gonna move that to one hundred thousand dollars to the football field. Give me office right there.
Any other discussions or any questions? All in favor of amending fund, fund, fund thirty seven twenty? For four hundred fifty thousand dollars for the hall roof project? That indicate by saying yay. Yay. Any opposes?
I know.
Is it two, two times, is that motion fails? I'll make a motion.
Give me a minute.
In a minute. It's the Harry and the motion.
I'll make a, a motion to amend item W. Uh amending fund thirty twenty-seven. Uh number four, fifty thousand dollars. For the hallway roof replacement. Uh. Engineering. Since, since the U was passed.
So Mr. Harry made a motion to amend item four from four hundred fifty thousand dollars to fifty thousand dollars. To cover the engineering costs that we may incur because of a previously approved item. You have a second. Who said, second, second, thank you, Mr. Oden. So we've been motioning second to amend item four. From four hundred fifty to fifty thousand dollars to make sure we cover the engineering costs for the hall de-roofing project. Any discussion? If not, our call for a vote. All in favor of amending item four, fifty thousand dollars. To ensure we cover the engineering costs, then indicate by saying yay. Any opposes? There be none, motion passed unanimously. Could I have a motion to consider approving to extend the agreement in Timberstone Outdoors for athletic field mains? Have a motion.
Motion.
Thank you, Mr. Harry, have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Oden, discussion.
The only question I have, I'm a member of Mass.
Mr. Shaw.
Uh was that, we had a, a maintenance agreement with Timberstone last year. Was that amount allocated to fulfill that same amount last year?
Um so that contract is the, uh, what it's gonna make for the baseball softball uh and football field. So we wanted to extend it uh one year, uh that contract one year, because we don't know what we're gonna do with football field yet, so. Guess uh. We're blessed to uh, to artificial turf for football field, and that's going to greatly uh change. So uh, we're just asking to extend it one year to sell the football field, and next year we'll, we'll be good.
So from last uh month. The, that, the bids that come in last month for the regular groundsman. That's not considered the. Correct. And then uh. The company that was approved last month, that they, they didn't wanna build this part.
No, it's two separate contracts. So we didn't, we didn't bid this contract.
Gotcha. So you guys. Okay.
It is two separate. Field make a round maintenance contract.
So they, they, Timberstone had both contracts, I assure you, but Molson got. I'm good.
Any other discussion on item X? If not a call for a vote. All in favor of approving to extend the agreement with Timberstone Outdoors for Athletic Field Maintenance? That indicate they're saying yay?
Yeah.
Yay? Any opposes? There be none, motion passed unanimously. But I have a motion to consider approving. Transfers from the sixteen section interest fund as the outline of your agenda pack. Have a motion to discuss. Thank you, Mr. Jones, for having a second, thank you, Mr. Heron. Discussion on transferring the funds from the sixteen section to district maintenance fund for various, some of maintenance projects. So again, I, I understand that any funds that come from sixteen section. Interest has to be used for certain things, being maintenance. But it can't be used for other stuffs. We have projects in mind, but it's.
We do several projects, you know, one of the things that we're looking. Is our exterior doors. Um, also some floor. Endeavor. Two-story building outside the gym. Doing some renovations in there for insurance.
On the elementary.
So several, several different projects that we're working on. Mainly to get us uh, some of the safety, some of this. You know, just positively be.
And that building right outside the gym, is that the building that's on the store registry?
It is.
We plan them, I know the building, it's vacant now. Is it not?
We're using. Um, upstairs, a roof division for testing.
Okay.
A lot of their small group testing is used upstairs. There's some storage in the bottom. Floor of the building. I won't put it in there. Um, there will be some changes and. Just. Okay, some of the walls, you know, you said ecstatic things. Talking to Mr. Maybe, I think there's pretty much. Fixed the issues that we need to do. Yeah. The upstairs should be, this.
Reasonable platforms in the main.
Upstairs, yeah. There's those classrooms, you ready to do, testing, upset, a bit of hard testing.
Considering this amount is not gonna cover the originally estimated on the doors.
We want to do sounds and time instead of trying to tackle all.
Any other question or discussion on? Transfer from sixteen section interest fund. If not a call for a vote. All in favor of approving the following transfers from sixteen section interest fund to district maintenance funds for various some of maintenance project? Then it can be saying yay? Yay? Any opposers? There be none, motion passed unanimously. But I have a motion to consider the consent agenda and then to vote some choose, I'd like to take that. Item A through. H, item A through H.
Motion.
Thank you, Mr. Heron. Have a say.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Call for a vote, all in favor of approving the consent agenda, item A to H, then indicate they're saying yay? And yay, any opposes? There be none, motion passed unanimously. But I have a motion to consider approving. But I have a motion to, to consider approving. Arena showers as teacher assistant for. The twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four school year pending hiring process. Have a motion. That's item, sorry, nine, exact height.
Make a motion to consider bringing this shells teacher assistant for twenty twenty three.
Thank you, Mr. Jones, have a say.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Oden. Any discussion? All for both, all in favor of approving arena showers and teacher system for the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four school year, then indicate they're saying yay? Yay, any opposes? There be done, motion passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Policies. But I have a motion to consider approving section D. With the exception of item DJ, policy DJ, I have a motion.
Make a motion to consider approving section B with the exception of DJ.
Thank you, Mr. Jones, say a second, say, thank you, Mr. Heron. Any discussion? Yeah, these are policies that we put in a, in order to review. On a monthly basis, so we can get through all of them in a twelve-month period and look at how there was nothing that would identify. That needed to be updated at this time, certainly we could come back. If we see something laid on, we did not identify anything at this time, there need to be amended those policies. All for. All in favor of approving section D with the exception of policy DJ. That indicate they're saying yay? Yeah. Any opposes? There be none. Motion passed unanimously. But I have a motion to consider approving PRC administration recommended revisions. To policy DJ, policy JBC, policies JT HR and policy T E A. We have a motion.
Motion.
Thank you, Mr. Oden. They have a say. Like, thank you, Mr. Heron. On those particular policies. There were some items noted that the administration. Hell, they need to be amended and changed. There was nothing that was significant enough to make it say it's a new policy with major changes, so these policies can be included on tonight. Uh, there was a sheet. That was accompanying those policies to let you know what changes were recommended. Uh, in those. With mounting in nature, I think what was on. Expenditure funds, there was a deletion of a policy that we know had it. Had once on policy JBC was school mission. There was a, a section about. Information look to be used for current resident address. Policy JGHO from school services talks about how we handle the liquid debt for school, schools. Mews and also policy E E A A, turn to bill policy to deal with the same thing, so there was a mountain of revisions. As to how the district would handle when there is a balance or significant balance of. Any other questions on that? If not, all for one. All in favor of approving PRC administration recommended revisions to policy DJs, JBC. JGHR and E E A A, then indicate they're saying yay? Yeah. Any opposes? There be none, motion passed unanimously. But I have a motion to consider discussing with Doug and engineering regarding the football project. Have a motion.
Motion.
Thank you, Mr. Heron, have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Oden. Mr. Shalzy have some money to.
Have some. Don't get into this. And share my, uh, football project. Have options.
And then to, I just wanna make sure that tonight is for information sharing.
So I know y'all have an old electronic copy, but heard the engineering room had drawn proof a couple months ago. We didn't say we're gonna bring the liberals, I'm bringing the liberals, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
So what you see in front of you is uh, we took time to. I put together, the first thing is the letter that I addressed TJ, cause it was uh. The letter that was pressed to him uh in regards to this, and so behind that. And I'll get back to that in a second, behind that is the. Engineer's opinion of probable costs for the football field turf project. And that is the first, uh, look about seventeen attachment you see there. Uh, I'll get into it, then following that is the. Cost estimate for the grading drainage and siding project. So uh. TJ had requested us, as mentioned before in the uh, previous approval of us doing this work. The school wants to see the options, uh, turf paint versus grading and residing the football field. Uh, as we sure. Each of you have walked out there and seen the improvements needed, so the school has reached out to us to uh provide some preliminary engineering work to uh. Do this, so. With that being said, uh, we can look at the first uh. Well, to preface all this, so as the letter states, Doug Engineering has prepared this budgetary cost estimate based on the current unit prices received from bids and similar sort of work. In addition, uh, we have consulted with local contractors regarding the potential construction costs. The construction industry is experiencing a volatile market with rapid vast increased. In material and labor costs, these market conditions are affecting our, our liability, our ability to provide accurate and reliable construction cost estimates. Uh, we have prepared this cost estimate based on the best information available to us at this point in time. And uh, and so once I preface everything, this budgetary estimate shall be regarded strictly as a budgetary estimate for planning purposes. And not a guarant, not a guarantee by the engineer. Um, it's based on the conceptual plan prepared and not final design construction plans. The costs are subject to very much final design construction, uh, so with all that being said. Uh, I'll walk through the. Cost estimate for the football field with you first, um, so you see the layout design for the turf. Uh, not only includes football field, but also you see very faintly across the banner on your electronic burger, but. Includes very faintly uh soccer field as well, um, and so. Uh, the scope of work for that, uh, bottom right is, is, you have strip topsoil with cut shift and shape earthwork material for proper drainage. Uh, and then we'll install some synthetic turf system, which is including subsurface turf drainage. Drainage aggregate and turf padding system in the uh. Playing area limits, and then we'll buy side drainage and then fixing along this cost estimate. So to break down the cost estimate, uh. The unfortunately, the biggest. Factor in all this is the turf itself, and so that, that square footage price, it came from two local contractors, uh, say. One is a major turf contractor, Pelus, who uh did the turf at the baseball field, and then another one is small, it's sport contract. Uh, who is Major Tommy Shook, some of you may have heard of him before. But uh, those, that's who we reached out to to provide an accurate uh square footage price of what they are bidding current prices at uh today. And so, and then along with the, the turf will uh. Have to have, we'll move a little replacing a fence, just because when we turn it down. To know baseball field gets replaced the fence, and so uh. And then all side grading and a, a full drainage system to carry out on each side of the field, one to the potential pond on the south side. Of the field and one uh to the current drainage system uh flow to the wall. So that wraps that one up real quick, um, and as you see on, on those, those are estimated construction costs, and I'll reiterate again that. Uh, this was, this is budgetary cost estimate based on current heat prices received from bids and so. So moving to the next one is the uh. Grading drainage and siding project. Um, one of the, one of the main things I wanna point out, uh. Is with this siding project, it also has irrigation, uh, as we know, this, this has to be included, so that, that is a major. Our cost in this breakdown of cost estimate, but the scope of work here, we get stripping topsoil, cut shift and shape earthwork material for proper drainage. Uh, re-top soil, install soil. Install the irrigation system, install subsurface drainage, uh. Install the solid side again and. We'll have to do fencing work with this because once we correct the grade in the football field, we'll have to remove the fence and the fence can be uh put back, but we'll have to be. If we're doing a big project, it might as well be fencing itself in our, in our table, actually. Uh, and the current, for my one-time work, I have to put the current status of that fence, I'm sure has to be placed uh in line. So uh, so with this cost estimate, uh, you can see the, the major factors in this cost estimate. Uh, is of course the six, uh, six thousand four hundred square yards of sod needed for football field. Uh, and then also the irrigation system with a three-inch service loop, four-inch media, all that stuff, so. Probably Terry Joe care about, care to hear about, but uh. So those are the two major items, and then also the subsurface site drainage. Uh, as y'all know, the, the uh, or as y'all may not know. There is only one drainage line and it's on the home side of the football field where the players stand. Uh, and it is only about a, I, I'd say maybe. Two, two to three inch trench drain. And I think it may even be brushed on one end uh that's towards the field house, so yeah, so there's no drainage on. To our, to our knowledge and wanted to sense as. Uh, parents and players are probably well aware. And so this is our uh proposal to fix this problem, we of course, we were approached to have two separate options. And these are the prices that we see uh. This construction occurring at. And uh, once again, I'll, I'll end it with saying, these, these, this is a budgetary cost estimate for planning purposes. And they are based off the current heat prices that we have received.
Go need files and submit take next week.
I've got, I've got, I've got four inch PVC pipe that changed from the last week. Just one thing. Don't pour water.
We did a similar project like this at my previous school, you know, thing, you know, a little bit of four hundred thousand. Um, so you see that the prices jumping when it's through. These things. No.
Oh, the slide.
We got pricing, so.
Our estimate is something two or three years. We're hope. It was seven, eight hundred dollars. Yeah, we have seen. So that's good to show you how much it's changed.
Yeah.
It's in short view.
And sometimes we have, this is just, sometimes we've seen just a requested prices, some turf contractor. Will just give you the price of turf itself and not include all the base work needed for the drainage to act again, the, the major hole.
I'm just taking a guess here, but this is. You proved this, just say, we, we're doing, pulling the trigger on this pretty quick. It's, it's, this can happen to you, right?
No, no.
Yeah, it's a, thank you very much. Right, yeah, yeah.
And that, that was the kind of, now, TJ, I didn't speak for you, but that was kind of the folks that uh. That TJ reached out to us and that at this time, just to get the ball rolling, we get the call process still. Um, over the next, uh, I guess twenty twenty four season.
Uh, question about some cost breakdown. When you look at the mobilization, it's the first thing. I had the estimate, is that just every sub, or that just?
Well, yeah, this, so this, this is for general contractor, so the general contractor will get every payment, they'll pay their sub.
Okay.
And so, and just for your knowledge, so typically on mobilization, uh, we have in our contract documents that mobilization fees shall not exceed over ten percent of the project cost. And with, and when that's. Your turf contractors, I mean, they're, they're global, I mean, not global, they're uh, uh, countrywide. So they're, they're bouncing, they'll be in South like, uh, one, some of the crews from just people experienced with baseball field, some of those crews were. They left from South Carolina, were leaving to. Somewhere in the, uh, North Dakota or something, Wisconsin, so that, that's why it's such a high mobilization fee, but it is. Uh, that, that's just the cost you get turf contractors as well. But also typically you see anywhere between five or ten percent of the uh. Contract cost, unless it's usually a little contract, they'll have a little cost. Mobilizations for, yeah, clearly just to get to the project, all their equipment, materials and.
Any other questions? If not, thank you, appreciate it. Uh, we don't have any other items on the agenda, but we have the executive session, so with the business will be concluded, I'll call for motion to adjourn. Remove. Thank you, Mr. Jones, have a second.
Sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Herron, thank you, Mr. Oden. All in favor of adjourning, then it can be saying yay? Yeah, yay? Any opposedes? There be none, motion passed unanimously, we now adjourn.